The Dunbarren Board of Selectmen meeting September nineteenth, twenty twenty four to order. All three selectmen are present. Leo Martell is videotaping for the public. That goes on the Dunbarren website as well as YouTube. Linda Dickerson uploads them. I see the road agents present here tonight as well as the town administrator. Okay, first thing on the agenda, we have some old business from.
My motion to approve the regular meeting amendment for September fifth, twenty twenty four has amended.
I'll second that. Most of them made a second, they're ready to chance to review them. Any other issues with them? No, all in favor?
Aye.
We'll sign those as soon as Lane brings them in. I'm gonna open this up for public comment. If you're here for an item that's on the agenda that we just handed out, you can wait till that item comes up. So any public comment? Okay, that being said, we'll go right into the order business. Okay, we have a public hearing tonight for a request to build on a lot without class five frontage per hour say six seventy four point four one. Lot number is F five dash O two dash O six owned by, you're gonna have to help me with the name here, Aurora.
Correales.
Correales Fields LLC, Mike and Kathy Garfield. Okay, that being said, we're gonna start in our review. Many of you might know that we did start a new policy for building on a class six road and or private road in the town of Dunbarren. We've been working on several of these different roads throughout the town as people are trying to expand to land that has not been taken up. And we've had four or five of them come over the last couple of years to us. And we set up a specific chain of events that has to happen. People have to go to the planning board, get recommendations from the police chief, the fire chief, and the road agent. This property owner has done his complete checklist and gone through it. And so we're having this public hearing because after everybody gets done reviewing it, it comes back to the select board with their recommendation. And approval. Okay, that being said. Mike and Kathy, are you present?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, we have your package in front of us. Most of us have read it, if not once, but maybe a couple of times because we've had some changes as you've gone through the different departments. I'll go down through the list of items on the checklist. Originally fully executed class six or private road notice of limits of municipal responsibility and liability. That fully executed document only gets done after the board of selectmen approve it. And that just is a form to show that you guys are on that private roadway and not on a class five road that limits the liability to the town. It's been pretty common on class six roads for a long time as well. Copy of your building permit application which is in here. Copy of your plot plan showing the lot size, lot location, location of all proposed structures with setbacks, location and length of driveway in relationship to the lot, to the class six or private road, and the class five road that provides access. I've reviewed that, I do have a question on that one on one of the maps, but I'll get into that later. You've provided a copy of the tax map showing a lot of what you wish to build. You have given a copy of the deed, copy of the butters list, copy of the comments and recommendations from the road agents, and the improvements to the road, copy and comments and recommendations from the police chief and fire chief, copy and comments and recommendations from the planning board, planning board's public hearing. Any other information the property owner wishes to provide to explain their request for a building permit on a class six or private road? So in doing this, I think you're one of the first persons to go through the entire checklist and provide this information to us, which was pretty extensive. I do have one question for you. I brought this to the town administrators. I brought it to her when I first saw this. We had a design, which your septic design and lot was all perfect. Where did I put that? I guess I have it here in the file. Yeah, that's what I was looking for. Forward by the half summers. The question I have for you is the right of way I noticed was not delineated on the map. And the recorded map that's up at the registry of deeds was map one two one five nine, recorded August fifteenth, three twenty five P M, nineteen ninety one. And on there, Millie's Way shows the meets and bounds going up, turning the corner, going up to the top. And then Blueberry Trail was not depicted on the map. The boundary setbacks for everybody's property were there, and it wasn't on the map at all. And I told Lee, and I said, before this request can go through, that has to be drawn on there by a surveyor so that we're aware of where that road is going through the properties. And there was a nice deed that spelled that out very clearly, but it was not located on the map. So we have a map in front of us tonight, which this right of way information in red was added by Sanford and Surveying and Engineering. It is a sketch of the deed and not a result of meets and bounds of an actual survey. And I've driven up on the road to check its width, and the road agent I'm sure has. I think both the other selectmen have had time to go up there and check it out. All the west look good in the road, and the section of road you're on actually has a fairly level pitch compared to the lower part of the road. But this section, this sketch of this road, is not laid out by meets and bounds on this map at all. And I think it would be a requirement of us to make sure that that's on there, on this map, as more than just a sketch, but an actual survey. So I'm not sure how the other selectmen feel, but Mike and I have read a couple of things quickly in reviewing it before we came to the meeting.
I was hoping it was gonna be on the original plan, and the thing is, then it was pointed out to me, this is a copy of the original plan, and it's not delineated here, and that's a challenge.
And Millie's Way, when you look at this description, like you just gave us this Blueberry Trail maintenance agreement, which is all great, and it spells out the lots that the agreement is with. But when you look at the Millie's Way maintenance agreement, it states that, you know, they reference this plan, and the meets and bounds in that Millie's Way section are all located. And I think that, you know, in doing that at this stage would be wise because it would afford you the protection of, if somebody says, hey, that road's, you know, there's a lot of nineties on that roadway. Somebody says, hey, this is encroaching on my lot, or it's not. By having it surveyed properly, I think that we can avoid a lot of maybe fights in the future, even though it is all a private way at this point. So I think you guys did make a step in doing that by, by having it laid out on this, but just not by meets and bounds.
No, it doesn't have the same detail as Millie's Way did on the original deed. It's just a sketch of someone put on there. Who knows how accurate it is.
Right. So in order to get your permission, now we obviously, it sounds like you want us to have this survey.
I think this is the final leg of it because everything else you have, to me, looks like you're keys across, your eyes are dotted, and you're there.
Yeah.
And this, this just came to me tonight, actually, is the first time I saw this sketch.
So, you know, assuming that the surveyor can get out there in the next few days or so, I don't know what his schedule would look like. Would we have to, did he get the work done? Would we have to come back in two weeks for that final approval, or could he get it in and assume he'd say we can get the approval at that point?
I would think we could do it one of two ways. I don't like to do this, but we could do a conditional approval.
Yeah.
State that, you know, if you get that into us afterwards, that way we don't have to redo a public hearing or anything to that effect. And we could go ahead and get that going and keep you rolling. I think most boards try and shy away from that because sometimes stuff never gets done, but we just, we won't continue the process whether it's not done.
Thank you.
So I think that that's something we can work on. I'd like to go through first the select board to see if they have any other questions of the applicant.
I don't think so, everything seems pretty. No, I thought it was, it's a, it's a new process for us too. And you were the, as Dave said, you were the first to go through it. And we're, again, it's growing pains.
Yeah.
And so thank you for being with us, but I think the process is working. And you, you gave an honest effort to meet every specification that we asked for. This is, this is the one detail that is, is missing.
I think the package is extremely complete. That's everything we've asked for.
And if anybody's seen, if anybody's seen that new road agreement, there's, there's nothing. I mean, several pages and there's a lot of information to come with, so take our hats off to you for getting that as quickly as you did. So I guess we'll start in the room. And we'll go down through, I guess if you guys would like to start, if you have comments on this subject tonight.
Yes.
State your name and address for the.
Yep, my name is Andrea Hunt. This is my husband Jim and our attorney Eli Leno, who was with Bernstein and Shore and just helped us walk through that six forty seven, six seventy four forty one statute. We live at nine Oddly Divide, which is about half of our property backs up to that section of the road I think that you're referring to. The maintained road generally ends at lot seven. And then there's a small track or trail that then extends the rest of the way to lot six property. That is.
Is that your backyard? I turned around there tonight?
Yes, yes.
Were you in the backyard?
Yes.
Okay.
I waved at you, yeah. And so, you know, and it comes very, as you could see, comes very close to, to our stone wall, and it's, we have an open lot. So we are interested in knowing what the plan for improvement of that section of the road is to comply with the new regulations of the twenty two foot wide, you know, gravel, one inch of gravel, and how that might affect, you know, the rain culverts and how that might affect, you know, our, our property.
And looking at the road system up there, it looks like the base of that road was built all the way up to that lot edge there. I think Jeff is our road agent, he's gone up and checked it out. But you can see the grass has grown in on the shoulders, but I, I could see the definition of the shoulders and then the bags there.
It's about, it, it seems to be about ten feet wide or so, the drivable portion of it.
Yeah.
And.
Mr. Chairman, my question, and I also went through their checklist and agree with you, but my question was the same place you had questions. Again, Eli Leno from Bernstein, Sheriff in Manchester, is that if the plan shows the location of all proposed structures with setbacks, location and length of driveway in relation of lots to the class six private road and the class five road that provides access. I have a couple of plans that were provided by town staff, which I appreciate, but I don't know that any of the plans have done those. I know that the board has already requested that some additional surveying be completed. The main question that sticks with me right now is that you have this new set regulations passed in July. And as part of that, the road shall have twenty two foot traveled surface with two foot shoulders on each side for a total of twenty six feet wide. What I'm trying to figure out is that if we have a thirty foot wide right of way and we have twenty six feet required in terms of road width and fifteen feet setbacks from their, their yard on Oddly Divide, I can't figure out from any of the plans I've seen so far how this math works. And again, the edge of their driveway is an antique stone wall, so water and changing the way that works in terms of impervious surfaces. It seems to me we didn't receive public notice, and I don't think they had to for planning board because I don't think it requires a public meeting. But again, the, the planning board had no comments when we're changing the nature of the impervious surface around sensitive areas and other lots seems surprising to me, so.
Yeah, well, you know, as everything changes in town, you know, we just barely got driveway regulations this last month or two in the town of Dunbarren. So we've been, you know, building driveways in Dunbarren by the seat of our pants, and as the road agent will tell you, that hasn't always worked. And fire departments said, you know, some were way too narrow for our equipment. So we just went over and moved into that, which towns are taking somewhat baby steps because, you know, people have been able to have free use of their property for a long time, and we're, we're trying to correct things as we go here. I was on the zoning board for eighteen years, and now I've got a selectman going on nine. So I've been around a while, and we've had a lot of changes in that time, and hopefully for the better to make sure things are covered. But our road agent's here tonight, and I was gonna ask him after everybody spoke what his thoughts were. I know that all the departments went out there and looked at the road system out there and thought it was sufficient.
I did see, if I may, that Chief Wiggins said they need to show some type of plan on how large trucks will be able to get out there. And then Mr. Crosby said that they need to meet the current driveway guidelines, which does again bring in that new fifteen foot setback.
Yeah.
So I don't know if this ends up being a variance from that, or somehow here through the various regulations, not everything can quite be met in terms of the math without relief, seems to me. And I haven't seen it on a plan, which may be helpful, but.
Did you get their septic plan?
They did.
That does show some of the walls here that your butters have on it. And where the house location would be, at least that would give that position of the home. But I think you're right, what we're requesting from them will help with a lot of those things. And see, you know, the unfortunate part for them is other homes were able to build up there before regulations that are currently using that Blueberry Trail. And now, you know, he's got the burden of showing this, showing this up here and putting it in place. But I think it's a step in the right direction to making sure that all those questions are answered.
And again, I think the last thing that I really would say is that we're not anti-development. There are houses up there, but of course, it's the New Hampshire and the American way that you can build on your property, et cetera. But at the same time, we want to make sure that the water's not coming off this new impervious surface and coming into theirs, which is what that site plan review and all these regulations fundamentally are for.
Right.
So I would certainly hope that a conditional approval isn't granted because there is still survey and engineer work that should be furnished to this board.
Yeah. Okay, well, we'll take that into consideration. Anything else from you guys?
I have a, a question just on the utility poles because they kind of end and will have to be brought, I would assume, to the site. And wondering whether they be above ground poles or underground electrical or I, because they'll also be part of that roadway, I would assume that would be done.
Yeah. I don't know about the poles, I think you can both go above and below ground with them nowadays. I've developed several lots and it's been kind of the homeowners. Do you guys know what's doing?
I believe I jumped on it, it wants to bury the lines.
Yeah, so the lines will be buried, and somewhere they'll have a, a transfer station because that's quite a distance there, I think, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Going on to the next person, back row. Anybody here? Anybody else for this?
Well, we're here for this, I don't know if you, you want to hear, but.
This is your chance.
Yeah, yeah, so we've owned this property for over twenty years, twenty five years.
Oh, you're the homeowner, so.
Yeah, yeah, we used to live on Oddly Divide.
Yeah.
And.
Could you stick your hand?
Oh, sorry, Kathy Garfield, her address is twenty eight.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
No problem.
And we bought the land from Mike Oddly.
Yeah.
And with always the intention of building a small home after we raised our kids in Boe and wanted to move out into the field. So, you know, we know that we've been paying property taxes for twenty five years as a buildable lot. And, you know, we did secure the, our Dunbarren butters. They all sent either notes or emails.
Yeah, I saw that in the letter.
Yeah, so, you know, we're very excited to build back there and become part of the Dunbarren.
Looked like a nice, nice view lot.
It is, it's beautiful out there, it's very peaceful. Love it very much.
Okay, anybody else?
I have.
Steve?
Yes.
Did you want to speak to this, to this lot here?
No, 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 I don't.
Okay, you're on the agenda for later, okay?
Okay.
Road agent.
So I'd like to.
Oh, oh.
So, hello?
Yep, go ahead.
Still on the topic, correct? Michael Wood, I live in eleven Oddly Divide in Boe, so I'm the next property right against the proposed build lot.
Okay.
And I guess my lot would be impacted most by this development of this lot. Like you said, beautiful view, all that stuff. I just came here for a couple of clarifications and some assurances about safety. And I wasn't ready to the fire meetings and the fire chiefs and all of things like that. As you know, the end of Blueberry Trail, it's, it's a walking path.
Yeah.
The proposed build lot is about fifty yards off my property line, less than a hundred yards from my actual structure. And I just wanted to make sure that, obviously, when you.
I'm sorry, when I drove up, I thought I was looking at their property, time was a year property instead?
There's, the right side, we share the same one.
But you're the next one past, right?
Yeah, the Tudor style, one brown and stucco and that.
Yeah, I didn't go on the lot itself.
Please come up, I would invite anyone who wants to look at the lot, come on up to eleven Oddly Divide, you can pull out the driveway, walk right across, look at the lot. It's right over the wall. And so I'm assuming once you achieve a waiver to build on a non-developed road that you accept a certain amount of risk.
Absolutely.
That risk is if there is a fire or need for rescue, that the town may not be able to respond in an appropriate reasonable time. I don't know what reasonable is, okay? Having that lot that close, the proposed structure that close to my physical dwelling, can I get assurances from the title, town of Dunbarren that Dunbarren Fire and Rescue will be able to get there fast enough to prevent any spread to my property in Boe?
I'm gonna say probably not.
Right.
Because we're not gonna give other assurances to somebody at a different resident, a different town.
Correct.
That I can remember.
So now by.
Even if you lived in this town, I don't think we would give you that assurance. It's a volunteer fire department, you gotta remember too.
But for them to accept the risk, I'm fine with that. For anyone who wants to build out in the middle of a field, the rest of those houses.
And there is a specific sign off that's several pages long that they're gonna sign before they get their driveway permit from us as well.
And so there's a number of houses on Blueberry Trail, but again, there's nothing around them, and they're not a hundred yards from another structure.
Yeah, there are two more on Blueberry Trail before that.
Correct, correct. And again, there's nothing around that. So yes, I'm, if they want to accept that risk, that's fine, I have no problem with that. But how, I don't, I don't want to accept that risk.
Yeah. I mean, we do have setbacks in the town of Dunbarren, which are much larger than most towns around, including Boe. The setbacks in Dunbarren are fifty feet to the boundary line. And the septic system looks like this one's way down the hill from you. So this structure here, I don't have the exact distance it is, but it's quite a ways off that boundary line. I see the setback going in here. It looks like almost double the setback, and it's off the line, I'm not sure the exact amount, but. I measured it, it's over a hundred feet to the stone wall, and then.
And again, those should be on the plan per the regulation.
And they are. You know, it's all on this one plan here, the septic plan that provides that information. So town, so we hear you, and, you know, we'll take all that stuff and revise it. Appreciate it. Back to the road agent.
Yes, sir. I drove up there, I haven't been up there in years.
Yeah, me either.
I mean, and it's quite a ways up there, for sure. I do realize that it's different. People like change particularly, but they do have a right to get a building permit as long as they meet the criteria we set forward. Having said that, I, as representing the highway department, really have no issues with it because we're not gonna maintain it, we're not gonna deal with it. My big thing is the fire department and life safety, basically, so they can access it, get a large fire truck, which costs six hundred thousand dollars these days, and negotiate some sort of turnaround out there to safely get in and out without causing any problems. I wish John, Fire Chief, was here because that's kind of his, his thing. I did talk to him.
His notice turnaround here.
Yeah.
Seemed to meet his requirement as long as it was all done.
The, the other, yeah, the other part of that is where I'm going with that too is, I was a little confused when I went up there because I drove and drove, and as you get to the end of the road, it's narrow, we established that. And there is some sort of turnaround there. Where is that in reference to your, where you're gonna build? Because that isn't shown on any of the plans.
It's another hundred feet.
It's about a hundred feet. And then after that, there's a chain link fence gate.
Yeah.
And that, is that the town line or the property lines or something?
The property line, yeah. And, yes, it's the property line. Town line would be off to the right, which is the stone wall, and it others' properties.
So that field that you're looking at is, is where we're gonna build? It's a cleared field?
Yeah.
So you're going through that gate?
We're going, yeah, kind of down to the left.
And a hundred feet in front of the gate.
Oh, so see, that's where I was confused because it doesn't show it on any of the plans I had.
So where the turnaround is.
Yeah, it doesn't show anything about the fence, that's why I didn't know whose, whose lot I was on. And I didn't want to go all the way through.
The turnaround's shown on the, the plan you have with the driveway which meets all the.
Yeah, but I mean, the existing, but it didn't show up there anywhere. Because that must be where people go up there and turn around now. So that would be the thing, I know.
I don't see the turnaround on any of these plans.
Are you talking about right on the other side, this chain link fence, that open area?
Courtney's turnaround that he built.
No, you're not talking about Courtney, you're talking about.
I don't know who Courtney is.
Oh, Bruce Courtney.
Turnaround before the chain link fence, you're saying.
What does the chain link fence identify?
The boundary.
Of yours and.
Bruce Courtney's house. Bruce Courtney's land.
He's the last one to done this build on, and you're after that. You're the clear field.
Correct.
Okay, I thought you were on this side of the fence. Again, in any of these plans that Donna was able to hit, it doesn't mention it. So I was having a little trouble understanding. Well, anyway, at that point, I measured the gravel surface.
Yeah.
And it's sixteen feet wide at that point. So obviously, to meet the recommendation, it's gonna need a legal approval. Yeah, I don't, I still don't see that chain link fence on there.
Can't believe it.
It'd be that line probably up there.
What's it say?
Oh, it's probably right.
Yeah, it doesn't say anything. That's why I was confused. That's why I, I just, I wanted references before I spoke too much.
I think it's a.
I believe it, it's not that unbelievable, I just didn't know where I was. I see, I was thinking that was out of town. I'm with you now.
This is the chain.
Yeah, you start and go north.
It's a nice job. Michael.
But yeah, and I know you did show a turnaround.
Yeah.
On your driveway.
Right.
Down by the house, but it's gonna be a, a pretty good grade going down to the house there. In one of these septic plants, from the end of the road, it's about twelve feet as often.
Yeah, something like that's under ten percent grade.
Yeah, well, anyway, so I just want to make sure that the fire chief gets what he needs to make it happy. Evidently, people have been going up there plowing service vehicles, and they've been able to turn around and get out of there with no problem. I've never heard of any issue up there. I've been doing this for nineteen years, so they seem to be able to get along.
I understand the fire chief was concerned until he saw the turnaround.
Yeah, like I said, that's my big thing.
Right.
If he's happy with it, I'm gonna be happy with it. I think it does need to maybe be tweaked a little to meet regulations like this attorney pointed out to us on the fact of the runoff and all that. I'm not an engineer, but when I drove in there, it looked like her property's higher than this property. And things tend to run downhill. The house site is obviously downhill. So I don't think that's, even though it may need to be talked about, I don't think it's a huge concern. Again, I'm not an engineer, that's just with a naked eye. The other thing is, that would be it. John's thing is key to me, and again, I wish he was here.
Well, he did, he did.
Submit something.
Submit it, and his only, his only concern was to make sure that turnaround is adequate up.
Because I was trying to get out of him where the property line was, and either I wasn't articulating it well enough, and he was a little confused as well, but maybe he's more up on it.
He does say that the residents should be able to support one, and both Millie's Way and Blueberry Trail have a good track record of maintaining the roads.
Yeah, obviously. I agree with that, it looks like there's some level of maintenance that's been done on a regular basis up there.
And they do have maintenance agreements, which is good.
The only, the only thing, a side thing that I would advise you people, if you do go forward with this, then document, document the condition of the road before you start working there.
Oh, absolutely.
Because the big bad trucks wreck everything.
Yeah.
Because the big bad trucks wreck everything, yeah. And I would just maybe have property neighbors.
She's walked through the whole.
Yeah.
Walked with the neighbors.
Yeah, that's just, those, those trucks going in and out are always culprits.
And we do have access going up oddly if we need to.
Yeah, alright.
Uh, so let.
Sure enough, that's it.
Um, yeah, let me just check with the other here. We have actually a, um, town tax map from Bow, secure twenty-five P.
Yeah, I get that.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm, uh, that's, I'm O, twenty-five.
Then that would be us.
I'm P. You're P, okay.
Twenty-five O.
And so you're at twenty-five N?
Yes.
Okay, so it's actually all the way up to here. So we have all of the others here tonight. Uh, some houses are not here, but they sent a letter in, uh, which I think you have, they're, uh, the last on the property. Yep, and I do have that letter, thank you. They said they have no issue with it. It looks like to me that, um, twenty-five N, how this tax map is shown is they're a lot is beyond your lot, just a little ways here on the roadway portion of the lot.
Right, uh, about half of our lot is, is on that there.
Yeah.
Adjacent, and then half of it is, is the roadway.
Right. And you're twenty-five O. And what's twenty, what's the right of way twenty-five P going to that lot?
It goes right from oddly divide right up to the split in the wall, it's a lock gate. And it's a hard packed surface, it's been prepped for something like this in the future.
So there's a right of way off oddly divide to that lot?
Yes.
Thirty foot right of way, you guys aware of that?
Yeah.
And you have no plans to use it?
Um, possibly.
We don't know, it's up to our, yeah, it's up to our general contractor and these guys have been generous enough to permit it. Well, it's a right of way, I think it just goes with the land after that.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
Okay, you guys aware of that?
No, I have to see it. I just have to know it's going through the paperwork to me.
It's nice to know that there is a secondary.
My understanding is that's been transferred? That right of way's been transferred?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I own it.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it's no longer with the land?
Well, that right of way doesn't own the property?
No, I own the right of way and have given them full permission to use it if required.
Yeah, so they have some permission to use it. Right of way is always owned by the original landowner.
Well, it's been transferred to them.
Yeah.
Do you guys transfer the right of way back to the landowner?
Yeah, yeah, they, they own it, they bought it, it's, uh, all, it's one sale.
Can't quite use to live in their house.
I think what Dave's getting at is, they own, physically own the property, but the right of way, the crossing still exists.
Yeah.
Can I say something? My name's Cindy Anderson, one forty-four Hooks at Turnpike in Bow, I'm the real estate agent that sold the Garfields' house to the current owners now, and it was actually written, I'm not sure if it went into the deed, but it was actually written into the contract, um, when we did the survey, that they have permission to use that right of way going forward. There was, I don't even know if there was a timestamp on it. Do you remember if there was a timestamp?
Until the house was done.
Occupancy.
Right, until occupancy. So there was legal documentation that was drawn up at the time of the sale that they would, that was an agreement between all parties.
So they write to use it until they have occupancy?
Yes.
So once you have occupancy, you can't use that right of way anymore? So it's gonna be done good shortly to you?
Correct.
Yeah. Never seen that they're at the occupancy.
Well, maybe just have a building.
Basically for construction.
Yes, that's something, that's something.
Correct.
Okay, um, anybody else in the public for this? Okay, that being said, I'm gonna bring it back to the board. So, I think we've heard, um, most sides of this, and we've heard from all of our departments. I think most of John's questions were answered, Jess' questions were answered tonight. We still have the issue of having this, um, Blueberry Way right of way surveyed and put on a, on an actual map, a recorded map. And I'm not sure if it'll be this map or if he'll put a new recorded map in once he's done it. Probably it will be a new one, cause this is the original. Um, that being said, what does the board want to entertain? Do you guys want to entertain a, um, a motion?
For conditional.
For conditional approval, or do you guys rather wait till it's done and then do it all at one time?
Since we're not meeting weekly, I, I think a conditional approval would probably be most appropriate, so we're not gonna meet these people.
Let me go back to the homeowner and ask him one other question. Um, when are you planning on moving into the site, work on it?
As soon as possible, right when we get our permit, but our GC's ready to start.
Wait to be all closed in by winter.
Yeah, ideally get the concrete poured and framed, uh, closed in before snow flies.
You know, cause any of this road work or any of that type of work, you don't need any approval to start working on that portion of it. Um, just so you know that. Um, consensus from the board?
I, uh, I'd like the conditional.
I'd like conditional approval based on getting the, uh, meets and bounds for the roadway.
And as far as making an entire, uh, survey, Dave, what they did with Millie's Way, they, they made, uh, if you look at the, uh.
It's not the whole survey, just the.
No, you're right, but the thing is they can amend it, the current one, and amend this plan.
They'll use this information on this plan, but you'll see, they'll draw some new one.
Correct.
They'll use all this survey work, Mike, and they'll draw the new one in.
Yeah.
So it'll be a new plan to be submitted to the state.
To be recorded.
Okay. Alright, let's go back to the, uh, Aaron, do either one of the members wanna make a motion? Or you wanna make it to me?
Uh, once you get it, you got it.
Alright.
Okay.
So you got everything or something? I did, I'll make a motion. Um, to allow the request to build on a lot without class five frontage per hour, say, six seventy-four point four one. Lot four five dash O two, I'm sorry, F five dash O two O six, owned by Aurora Borealis Fields LLC, Mike and Kathy Garfield. Um, as a conditional approval, we'd like to see, um, Blue, Blueberry Trail identified on a, um, plan recorded with the registry and given to the town with the meets and bounds of Blueberry Way properly stated on the plan, so that we can see where this roadway goes legally. To match the, uh, to match the deed. And, um, I would just like to say in my motion, we've heard tonight from the road agent, we've heard from the Fire Chief, make sure that the proper turnarounds are made there. I want to make sure that we work with those departments to make sure that those, um, new regulations in place to turn that size equipment around are, uh, taken care of. I think with the site guys you have in place and the engineering complaints, that should be easy. Your plan does show, um, an appropriate turnaround, so we just wanna make sure that that's done there as well. And also, I would like to make sure that, uh, any upgrading of the road, make sure that drainage has the proper converts to keep the water going, um, away from the property over ceiling wall. Anybody wanna second that motion?
I'll second it.
Motion's been made, second all in favor?
Just got any discussion on it, is there discussion?
No discussion, I think with the floor already.
Okay.
Any further discussion going on? Okay, all in favor?
Alright.
Alright.
Thank you.
You can get back to us with that drawing as quick as you can?
Yeah.
On tomorrow. Thank you everybody for coming, I appreciate it.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you for your input there.
Do you mean foot for the driveway?
Right, right, so the driveway's. Step after the road, uh, it must be twenty-two feet, it's two, just a inch away, doesn't have to approach.
It's a fifty foot right of way.
It shows.
I don't know on the plan, alright? It says fifty on the, on the light.
Yeah.
On this one.
The red thing he sketched in is thirty or fifty?
Says fifty foot wide right of way described in appendix B.
Okay.
Deed book page and.
Alright.
Merrimack County Registry.
So the, the right of way is that wide, but not the travel?
Yeah, understood, thank you.
Thank you, make it work.
Thank you, guys. I wanna put the names again, second rundown page as you're requesting that. Okay, Blueberry Trail.
Yeah, thank you, I also wanna acknowledge the town administrator for, uh, putting this package together for us, thank you, Lee.
You're a surveyor, doing a lot of work.
I'm just gonna start with the.
Well, if you think Donna did as well, so I think we should.
Donna, yeah, Donna too, Donna.
Yeah, the two of us will.
Yeah. Pass kudos on to Donna, please, too.
Yeah.
This is the first one in the barrel, it's always a challenge.
This is, uh, the one I think. Okay, alright, going on, Steve, come right up. Steve, is it Calum?
I know.
Calum, eighty Rock Rogers Road Solar Project.
Yeah.
Steve, we had some information, I wanna apologize, you called me this week, I didn't have a chance to get back to you, but, uh, I wanna apologize, I actually try and call everybody back as soon as I can, but it was a crazy week for myself. And we had some information come back from the state inspector, correct?
I don't have that email, but.
You don't have that, you have a copy.
I got it, yeah.
So basically, I reviewed that email back from him and he said that he didn't wanna waive the depth of the, um, conduit.
That of him, John?
That was, uh.
Johnson. Yeah, I got it here.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Steve, I couldn't remember his name.
I got it, yeah. His name is Scott John.
Scott John, yes, that sounds right. So we reached out to him to see what he had said to you in the field, and he said that, you know, he never indicated that he was gonna allow it to go less than the eighteen inch depth that was required.
But I just have case to make though.
Okay.
These are two, uh, one they did, uh, inspection.
Yeah, can I see them?
And one of them is Scott, he's gonna be both.
Yeah.
You know, they gave it a look. No mention of any depth.
Are these both the same ones, or mine's eleven twenty-three?
Twelve twenty, twelve point, oh, seven, I did.
Solar panels on the.
You can see there's no depth hanging out. You can use hot motor.
Now, there is one thing here, it says PVC conduit used for solar system, and then they give you the code it references, NEC six ninety dot thirty-one D. Did you review that?
Yes, here I'm gonna tell you what I did.
Yeah.
First they came in and they told me all the panels have to be connected, grounded together, and then ground to ground pole, okay? And then they have to be two poles, four feet apart, and then you have, that is, that is, uh, on the solar panel side. All the panels have to be grounded.
Yeah.
Then grounded to the pole, and then four feet another pole, I have to ground it.
Okay.
That I did that. Then they told me all the conduit you're talking about, anything coming out of the la, out of the ground has to be metal, okay? On the solar, uh, panel side and on the house side. So I did that too. Uh, then they told me, uh, conduit out of the ground. I saw, then on the house near the meter, they told me I had to put two new poles like four feet apart, connect them together, and they had to be connected to the meter.
Yeah.
Which I caught, I put those poles and they, I didn't even have that picture. And connected to the meter, I had to call a guy, he has to open the meter and connect it to the meter, okay? Alright, then, he said, then they told me I have to install a DC switch next to the meter, okay? Something happened, they can shut it off, okay? So I installed that switch over there with a metal conduit and, uh, grounded that, okay? Then they told me, um, the junction box, they told me that's not waterproof to place that. I placed that. And they told me those connection on the metal, they are not waterproof, places.
So you're talking about all the services, you grounded them properly as it was stated in here?
Yes.
Yeah, so you did that portion of it.
And also I did, uh, other things, you know, the conduit, they told me put a metal conduit, and they have to be watertight.
On the curves?
Yes, and I did that too, okay? And, uh.
So you dug the conduit up and you put those in?
No, anything that's coming out of that, and also there's a compression.
Yeah.
Want me to put around, I put that on it.
So you took the conduit and the wires apart and you put those items in?
Anything that's coming out of the ground.
Yeah.
Has to be metal.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what he told me, and that's what he.
Yeah.
And then, uh. And then they go inside. Inside where it connects to the, uh, uh, the fuse panel, he told me this switch is the wrong place, move that down. And then he told me this is not properly routed, and I routed again, you know, with all metal, okay? And I have done everything, if you see on that thing there.
Yeah, have you, has he been out since you did all that other new work?
He saw that, but now everything is done, and the last time he came in for the depth.
The last time he went?
They want, no, it's not deep enough.
It's not deep enough, yeah.
But there's nothing over there, say, in any.
Will it refers to the code, which you'd have to pull the code up on a computer and look at it, or it's done and it'll show it to you in here?
No, the, no, I believe that, you know, what I'm saying is, I did all this work, everything they tell me, they never mentioned anything that to move that.
Yeah.
They told me do that, do that, but honestly, if that was dangerous, I wouldn't be using it. If the eight inches deep, nobody goes on my backyard, if, in the conduit, sealed conduit, it's not dangerous at all, okay?
The biggest thing to it, Steve, is it's not so much for you and what you do in the backyard, it's if you sell the house and other people are living there, and they don't realize it's there, and they dig it up, and they don't see the safety tape and it's close to the ground, and that's why that eighteen inch there is there.
Well, you have to be, you know, if you see the panels over there and they're coming out, you can't tell, it's not a line coming in there, I mean.
Right.
You know, it's not dangerous, nobody digs in there, okay? So I think I should be able to use that, since I went through all this, you know, trouble, you know? And only one, a couple things, you know, they're hanging me on.
Yeah.
And that's my, that's my request to you.
I don't, I don't see this board overriding the state.
Yeah, overriding the state, it's super his Scott John, he never mentioned it, and actually.
I see that on his last.
I saw it once.
He brought it up on your first one, but not on this one.
Brian, even once he mentioned, oh, maybe we need to check the depth, and I asked him over there when he was inspecting, I said, you know, he's talking about the depth, and he said, you probably be okay there. Now he may be, no, say, no, Brian's here, that's what he told me, you're probably, and it is not dangerous. It's absolutely not dangerous over there. That's what I'm saying, asking you, let me use after all the work I did, you know? And, uh, I wish I had known Brian, you know, when you gave these, uh, you know, I, anybody ever did, uh, himself these kind of projects here in this kind of town? I don't think he did, anybody did.
You mean, they'll tell what they should do?
No, the do, uh, build yourself.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm the only one who probably dared to do that, you know, I thought I could do that. And now, you know, it's, it's not really, it's only a six kilowatt system, you know?
Yeah.
It's not even that big system.
Um.
If it was dangerous, I would say, you know, I think. If it was dangerous, I would say, you know, I think, what, what could possibly happen, you know, is very large in age, it's ending this, in a conduit, what could be possibly happen?
Steve, Steve, why would they make the regulation though?
Because if you have this near where the transportation is going.
Yeah.
The people going over there, that will cause a problem. That's what it is.
Thing is, for us to overrule this, to me, I think it's, um, it's not good practice for us to overrule the state inspectors.
But you can say something, you know, I mean, this is.
But the thing is, all you'd have to do is expose it, let it, change the depth to eighteen inches and be done. You're that co- you're that close.
Yeah, but it's not just the wire he wants me. He wants to pull those other, you know, the sonar tubes too. You know, it's not just the wire. For me to do all that is like doing the whole thing all over again. And they should have told me in the beginning instead of let me do all this stuff.
What the depth is your sonar tubes at, you know?
My, well, it's probably four inches less than what you want. Okay? It's, they are usually coming at eight inches. Yeah, eight, eight, no, eight inch.
It's eight inch sonar tube, but it's four foot.
Four foot, yeah. Eight foot they usually are. You cut them in half, you know?
Yeah.
So I had sixty miles an hour wind over there and, you know, if anything was a lose, you know, it should be fine out. So I had no problem there. Nothing ever happened over there. You know, it's not you overruling. I mean, it's just like in general, I will make a, you know, give a break on, you know? If I had no.
Yeah, the thing is, it's not us giving you a break. It's basically us wanting us to circumvent the regular, the code. And the thing is, uh, for us to put, circumvent the code puts the entire town at risk for liability.
Say it's not, can you write it in writing that it's not up to the code?
It is, it is up to the code. The thing is, we have to follow code.
No, I mean, you can say the trajectory is not up to code. These two things, they don't meet. Okay? But then I can sign it for you. I mean, I.
But the thing is, I think that sets a bad precedent across anyone building in town that, oh, I, I, I didn't get these two things. I want to make sure they, that we can bypass code. We can't set that precedent.
Yeah, but nobody has ever, anybody ever did anything.
The thing is, it takes, it takes, it takes one and it takes one incident. It's, it's like, it's like the cutoff switch. Uh, why do, why did they ask you to put the cutoff switch, which you never had in the beginning, but you put one in? It's because if there was a fire out there and they needed, the thing is, you can't put water on there when you're not electrocuting yourself. They have to be able to shut it off in the house. Those are the rea- that's part of the safety reasons.
Okay.
And, and the thing is, uh, you, we get a massive washaway. So that eight inches is now maybe four inches. That's kind of.
Wash away on the grass?
You got it. The thing is, you, you don't know what kind of storms could hit this. I mean, we've, we've had storms in Dunbar. You've been here thirty years. You remember, let me see, uh, eighteen years ago when we got, so how much rain did we get hit? Help me out, gentlemen.
Yeah, a lot of rain. Yeah, I've been, we've been through that.
Yeah, but the thing is, what, what you're asking us is, you're asking us to basically tell the, tell the state inspector to go pound sand. I can't do that. I can't give you that waiver. I, 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 I can't do it. Dave, I can't do it.
Steve, it's not really that big a deal, you know?
Well, the thing is, um.
Uh, it's not dangerous. You know, it's not, even if this is a DC current, I don't know what you know about DC.
You're an engineer, but why does engineering make it eighteen inches? Why did they make it twelve inches if it was, if, if, if eight inches was good and they said, well, we'll make it nine inches to make sure it was safe? Overkill. But the difference between eight inches and eighteen is ten inches. That's, that's a little bit deeper.
That is when your trucks are going over it, you know?
Okay.
They're near the road. They have to be near the road if you're building near the road. Okay?
Steve, I think the biggest thing is the board doesn't want to go out and override what our, our building inspector and the state building inspector saying.
How about you guys told me he's gonna do the inspection and whatever he say, we will do that. You guys, when it first came to you guys, you told me that.
Yeah, we did.
And that's what he said.
Yeah, he's saying it's.
Now he's changing, oh, but they, anybody has it done, Scott, well, yeah, why didn't you write the first time that? It was that important. Don't you think you should write the first time, first thing you should write that?
Well, he, he didn't.
He just saying, but he didn't say anywhere about.
If you read that, it references the code and the code's gonna tell you eighteen inch depth. What he was doing there is asking you to read the code.
But that important thing, you just don't. He told me everything else.
I know.
But he didn't say, oh yeah, this is, that's the word.
Maybe in hindsight, he should have said, hey, you gotta do the depth of this while you're doing all these corners. You gotta bring this down deeper too. And he did put a notice on the back. He said, these are what I visually saw when I went out. And there may be other violations he didn't know to. So I think the biggest thing is, Steve, we don't want to send you circles. We don't want to be bad guys to you. But we're not gonna, we hired somebody. We don't really want to step on their.
You know, he didn't say anything over that. You know, that's what I'm saying. If it's that important, that's the first thing he should have said there.
Yeah, I don't disagree with it. He probably should have.
And if he had said that, I wasn't gonna do any of that.
Right.
I wasn't gonna do.
But you're real close now.
Not close. It's not close, my friend. This is the whole big job is digging up. It took me three months.
Yeah.
You know? That is the main thing, which he didn't say anything about till the end.
Well, get it low down before the ground freezes.
Why is one of?
It's gonna be a lot harder going through frost, you know?
You know, it wasn't big deal though, but you guys are stuck on, uh, technicality.
Yeah, and, and, and it might be, but unfortunately, that's the world we have to live in, you know?
Well, the, people use their, you know, you know, could be a little bit here and there, you know, they give up here and there, but they wasn't, listen, I'm the first guy who built that and I'm gonna be the last guy to build that. Nobody had time or, you know, will, he's gonna go there and start digging up.
Well, we, we have, we have other people put in systems in town themselves. They built it, but they, I know one we built on a roof, I think, was it George?
Yeah, it was mine.
George Holt.
George.
Oh, George Holt?
Yeah, well, he called.
George Holt.
Well, you gotta clean areas out.
George has, he does, aren't you lying?
But the thing is, um, you, I, I applaud you because you were trying to save a few dollars, but sometimes, sometimes with all the, if, you could have paid someone to do it, they would have, would have been in by now. And if there was something wrong, you could, you could have paid.
Put a, uh, solar pa- uh, panel system in your house, how much it would cost you?
Too much.
Sixty to ninety thousand dollars. Okay? So it's not even worth it putting it down in, you know, it's not even worth it.
The payoff is too long.
Yes, it's not worth it.
But the thing is, I, I, I applaud you for trying to save some dollars, but. The thing is.
How about you want to reimburse me all the work I did now because you're fucked? And your fault is because you told me this guy is gonna come tell you, I'm gonna make a list and that's what you wanna do.
Yes, and he, he.
And he did not say anywhere about digging up.
But he, but he covered himself. He covered himself by saying that that's administrative, uh, stuff. He covered himself. I didn't, I may have other things.
You know, these inspectors, they stick together, you know that?
I, 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 there probably some truth there. I'm.
They stay together. He, Scott didn't even say anything like that till Brian started saying that.
Well, I know Scott, Scott, early on was learning about solar panels. He wasn't versed with them hundred percent. And that's what the state is here to help us out, make sure our building inspector does it right.
Boy, that made me feel good, you know? Doing all that work and now I can't use.
Well, the thing is, um, maybe you should have researched the code ahead of time. If you knew it was eighteen inches when you started, why did you make it?
You know what? They should have told, uh, this Brian, you know, guy, when they, when you issue a permit, somebody like me who wanna do it itself, you should have told him to talk to this guy. And he is my inspector. You know that? So I had no, I didn't even know if this guy existed till he came down there, you know?
Well, and, and the thing is, when, when you do it yourself, you gotta be, you gotta take some, some personal responsibility here.
Yeah, and I did all the research, you know, about parts and everything, you know?
But it's, it's more than parts, but it's local codes, New Hampshire codes.
Well, I guess they got.
That's what, that's what's biting right now. Jeff, what do you got?
All right. I'm just checking out for the building inspector and the building department. They have inspection processes throughout any job. And if those were done kindly and correctly, which I don't know if they were or not, something like this would have been alleviated. I've done a lot of projects and typically conduit has to be inspected before it's buried. It's pretty simple.
You know, this guy, right away, now he not gonna let me do it anyway, but I tell you. Brian does not know anything about these codes. And the first time I asked him, I said, Brian, you think, you know, he told me I have to upgrade my electric system. And I called the electrician and they wanted three to four thousand dollars to change all the wiring, change the fuse panels and everything. That's what he was stuck on the beginning, which we found out that's not the case. I don't have it. John Scott ordered it out. Okay, then he didn't know anything about the codes. I asked him, if you telling me this is wrong, can you provide me the code, please? He had no idea.
Well, that's why I, I suggested earlier, we stay, stay with the state. He's a subject matter expert.
Yeah, he expert, but he made a mistake there. The mistake was, that's the first thing he should have told me. Hey, listen, you got to have digging up. That was the main, main job of this thing.
Yeah.
And he had me running around the, you know, all over the place. Do this, do this, do this, put this water seal this and that. And this conduit and then, oh, now dig up everything.
Oh. You, you, um, you have the weather we got from him, right?
Yeah, what?
We sent, we sent a question to him to ask him if he had talked with you recently.
I called him, yeah.
Good morning. I've not heard from him in a while. I have not told him conduit was fine. I told him the last time I talked to him that it would have to all be dug up, the entire length of the conduit to be inspected. I am not wavering on that point at all.
He's saying that now. He didn't say that before though. You know that? He's saying that now because he should have written it down in there. That's what we have writing, everything written.
Steve, don't forget your papers when you.
I will take it.
You want a copy of this? You have a copy of this.
He's gonna have it.
I, I got it.
I can get it.
Okay. Thanks for coming.
You guys, good luck to you.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Steve, best of luck.
I'm forgetting your keys. Your keys, key, sir.
You know, I never had a bad experience in this town, you know, till this point, you know?
Okay, um, going out to the next point here. Item number three. Um, we need to review and accept the new police department OH RV grant for five thousand dollars. The grant period runs through October first, twenty twenty-four through September thirty, twenty twenty-five. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the police grant of the amount of five thousand dollars for OH RV policing from October first, twenty twenty-four through September thirty, twenty twenty-five.
I'll second that. Motion made, made in second. Any public comment about it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There's a lot of signatures required on it. It's all flagged right there.
Oh, it's right here flagged for me?
All of you. There's spaces for everybody.
Oh.
I remember this one.
Well, we can watch the Patriots. We're gonna stay right here and everybody stay with us. You're bad, Dave.
It sounded like we were gonna. Oh, you moved the flag.
Could I, could I pull that one off?
I don't know.
Steve, once past here, we keep going, I'll start signing.
Well, I think it was interesting.
I'll start signing.
That's all the other stuff.
Okay. We have a, um, we've got a reaffirm a motion we made to computer, Community Power Committee. Motion from the board to appoint the Dunbar Energy Committee to the Community Power Committee for the purpose of bringing community power to the town of Dunbar. Where is that letter here, Lee?
There's an email on top of it and.
Eversource?
No. Everything's on the wall.
B, isn't that B right there? B. This one's taken care of.
A. Let's see, let me see again.
There are no signatures on this page here.
Is that, um?
It's right to know.
He's got the Community Power. That's the Community Power.
That's the, uh, police green. There's no, uh.
Yeah, this is, that's on it.
Okay. Kept me the wrong one, Dave.
I think it's in here.
You should be. Well, we'll sign that we get it. I'll just keep going down the line.
Okay.
It's on the table in the room.
Didn't check on the desk there where, uh.
Where you're sitting?
Yeah. I know we just wrote it.
Yep.
You, oh, you corrected it, Lee.
Yes, but I gave it back to you.
Man box, these are all man box. E, B, C, D. Okay.
Who's your number five?
Number five. Per R S A. I'll make the motion right now. Per R S A. Doesn't even say the R S A. What that could be doing. Am I supposed to remember that one?
Do what you usually do.
Gonna make it up. Okay, make a motion to accept unanticipated revenues for fourteen thousand five hundred dollars for the sale of the twenty-two thousand one fire tanker.
I'll second that.
I'm gonna make a discussion point here. I'd like to make the, make sure the money goes into a capital reserve fund. We've, we've always got them in the last several years. This would be a good, uh, startup of the capital reserve fund.
I have no issue with that. I do want to make a note that, uh, ten percent of that will be retained from the company that sold it for us.
That's for you to sign. This is for you to motion.
Okay.
And. This is just, uh.
She, okay, motion's been made. Second all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Lee, we just did the, uh, you didn't have the R S A written down on there, but I made the motion to accept that revenue for fourteen thousand five hundred.
Okay, there will be a follow up on that because if it's unanticipated, did you mention it? Okay, and if he comes, if the response comes back that we don't for sale of town property, then we're good and we'll.
And we made a motion to put it in John's account for capital reserve.
This, okay, so I'll save that for the warrant.
Minus the ten percent. Okay. Going back to Community Power, I'm gonna read the, uh, basically what we're doing is resigning a piece of paperwork that gave the Energy Committee, uh, the power to negotiate and come back to us with a recommendation. So the subject. Um, affirmation of appointment of the Community Power Committee. Motion, this motion is to reaffirm the decision made by the Dunbar Board of Selectmen meeting held on December fourteenth, twenty twenty-three to appoint the Dunbar Energy Committee as Community Power Committee for the purpose of bringing community power to the town of Dunbar with final decisions made by the Board of Selectmen after their recommendation. Um, I'll make that motion right now.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made by Dave Nall, seconded by Justin Nall. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, vote three to zero. What we did is we made the motion, but it wasn't clearly stated in our, uh, meeting minutes. And so there, need this for the P U C.
Dave? Yeah. So is that, that, uh, co-op, basically?
Name for the record. Name for the record.
Lee Martel. Is that the co-op, basically?
Yes.
Okay, so that's why they haven't said any.
Yeah, when it goes to the P U C, they need this to send it and they're sending this stuff.
I mean, that's why we didn't have, they haven't set a price yet.
That's right.
We, we understand, uh, Lee did some research today. They're still researching and trying to get the best price because they have a big, uh, we're part, we're a small part of a group.
Right, I know that.
And they're trying to get the best price from using the leveraging.
Right, right, right. I get that, yeah.
If it's, we're not gonna basically pull the, pull the, um, the pin to go forward unless it's a good rate.
Right. No, I, I get that. I'm just saying, they haven't set a rate yet because they're in, obviously, you just said they're investigating it, so.
Public services set their rate.
Yeah.
And it, and it's, uh, it's a little bit higher than what it was. It's ten, ten point zero four. Uh, ten, ten cents, ten, yeah, ten cents and four, ten and four is ten cents.
Yeah, right.
And, uh, and, and some of the rates that I've been, I went on Community Power and they're, they're hovering on the same ti- same amount.
Right, right.
And I'm not seeing any great, um.
Differences.
Right, but Dave pointed out to me, um, that if we can get a rate, let's say, um, a little bit under ten, it'll lock it in for a length of time. It'll be a win-win because next year, where are prices going?
Well, I think, I think we're told it's for about six months.
No, no. Just so you're clear, the price is held through Eversource and through Unitil for six months. But Dunbar Community Power will be trying to obtain a good price for thirty to thirty-six months, somewhere in that time.
I get it.
And that time is gonna be determined by the select board, so right now is a good time for us to get into a group.
Right.
And buy that out, uh, because it is fairly low right now.
Yeah, right.
Gas is historically low right now.
Yeah, now it's a time.
And I think it's a presidential year, so we're cross guard T is dotting our i's.
Yeah, yeah.
They're out buying, I want to say it's six hundred thousand megawatts now. Uh, they're out buying, I wanna say it's six hundred thousand megawatts now. We're gonna be in a group of about a hundred thousand. In the town of Dunbarren, it's somewhere between three and six of that hundred.
Right, right.
So, we're a very small percentage, but.
Oh, right, but we're in the, we're in the same large group, so.
The towns that just got um some some from community power are about nine point four cents. Which was a little bit of a savings, which it's hard to offer savings when the price is down so low now, but it's ab- abnormally low.
Yeah, right, right, right.
And I think in their next round, it's gonna jump back up, it's gonna be winter time, it's gonna be after the election.
Talking about it, so, you know.
So, we would like to lock everyone slow, John, you had something to say?
That that nine, nine, nine point four, four cents, who was that, that price from?
Um, that was the town of Conker, I think locked in with that.
Oh, 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 okay.
City Conker.
Yeah, 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 see, the uh ever, ever, ever uh 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 Source is um, is lowering their their e electric costs. And I understand that they will be raising their delivery costs.
Yeah.
So, to, to uh to, to be more competitive with the community power rate. They're, they're uh offering a lower, a lower price, but, but, but your bill isn't gonna really change much.
Aye, this time, this time went up from eight cent, eight cents to ten cents and change. And uh, and so it went up a little bit, but I I, I think the philosophy that Dave portrayed is that we get a ten cent, we get something just under ten cents and lock it in for, for a time, it's gonna be a win-win.
Right.
We'd like to not worry about it for three years.
Yeah, right, no, that makes sense. That was my contract originally, too, was for three years, it was such a low rate.
Does, does, does make uh.
And and the insurance policy we have, which, when you say, oh, thirty months, well, let's say, let's say, we, there's a bonanza and the price goes down. You can say, see you later, and you, one month later, and back in public, so EverSource. So, that's the insurance policy.
Yeah, right.
So, it's, to me, it's a, it's a no-brainer, but Dave wanted to get the longest term, and I'm, I'm, I'm for that, too.
Can I just say that we received them a letter from EverSource about three months, two, three months ago, saying that they were having two rate hikes um on the delivery cost. We've just, this month, are seeing the increases on our electric bill on the delivery charge of just under seven percent. And then by next September, the final total nine point six percent will be in effect.
Right.
And that, that's regardless of what, what supplier you choose, you, you're stuck with the delivery charge.
Right.
Yeah.
But, but, but they are doing that to, to um lower the, the uh power numbers on the bill, so that people will continue to buy through them, you know?
I, I don't think that's the case, I think what's happening is, the gas is abnormally low right now.
Oh, yes, also.
Majority of their, it's nuclear and gas that they buy, so it's just, they're low because of that reason for now, but as Leo said, it's gonna jump up right after the first year.
Oh, yeah, it'll go back up.
If you're betting person, I, I take that bet.
So, hopefully, we can get on it before then.
Yeah.
So, moving on, item number six on the regular agenda, van stand repairs. Um, I worked with Donna. She called up, um, we've just talked about this, Leon and I, about van stand repairs, we had money set aside for the repairs. But we hadn't heard from anybody. Well, Donna had seen, Donna Dunn, that's who I'm talking about, had seen the uh repairs done to the uh bow van stand, where they put a metal roof on there. And uh, she liked the look of it, she called me up and said that Paul Modzuleski uh would donate all the product for the project.
True.
Um, he was wondering if there was any money to pay labor, Donna said there was some. We checked the amount that we had in the, the funds, and she was gonna tell me the amount, I said, well, if you can let him know, ask him how much the labor would be instead of telling him the amount. And uh, it was substantially under what we have in there, so that was good that she did that. I'm gonna let you know the labor amount right now, because she'd sent us.
Sixteen hundred and fifty.
Sixteen fifty, even?
Mm-hmm.
For sure. Let me look at it just to make sure. Yep, it is sixteen fifty, so the material will be black, Paul Modzuleski, AKA Century Roofing, is going to donate the materials for the black metal roof on the van stand. Same as the Hearst house. His labor cost will be sixteen fifty, we have enough in the T C P van stand account to cover that. He's putting us on the schedule.
Make it so.
So, that being said.
I'd like to make a motion where we follow the uh, the generous proposal from.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we follow a proposal from uh Century Roofing with the donation of the materials with the uh sixteen fifty labor charge on the van stand roof.
I'll second.
Which was made in second all in favor?
Aye.
Dave, can I offer a s- a suggestion? Allow him to.
Don't we wanna call it a gazebo, though, guys?
It's a van stand. Uh, offer a suggestion, maybe you allow him to put his sign up for, in return for putting that, doing all that work, you know?
Yeah, I don't think we have a legal book on that.
Be a really good thing for them to be able to do that, you know?
Yeah.
He can leave it up there for at least.
While he's working, he's only gonna be there for not even a year.
Well, no, but he left it there for, he left it there for a little bit, so people could see it, you know?
I'd say at least a month. Is that reasonable?
I'd say at least all of that.
One month?
Or not.
One month.
Let's say nothing. This guy's alone, there you go. See them minutes, on TV.
I have no issue with the consensus by the board if he wants to put a sign up. Fine.
No, but no, no longer than a month.
Okay.
That's why he's consensus all along.
Well, do we have consensus either?
I don't care.
I don't, six months from now, I don't wanna see the signs still out there.
It'll be on the snow.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Oh, boy.
He's gotta shovel it out himself.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm gonna go to the mailbox items now. Update on the water system.
It's in A, mailbox.
A, B, C, D. Here we go. You are welcome.
Stop at the bottom, start at the bottom.
I'll go backwards. Hi there, I just put a bag of salt in the capital well tank that is in the cellar, it seems to be lasting a long time. But just to let you know, there are five bags left, Mary. You are welcome, and the dehumidifier is still running strong, all is well down there. Thank Mary from the board for that?
Yeah, I know.
And um I don't think there's a lot of use on the water system there, so that's why.
No, the, the water's not, not hard at Dunbarren, I, I, I've been, I use about a bag a year. And for household use.
Yeah.
And the thing.
Burnt up right up.
Say again?
I go, it's like nobody's business.
Yeah, I think it's all different.
Well, it is. It's very, it's very, it's, it's not, soft water here, it's not bad. But the thing is, you need it to, to run the other.
Maybe on your side, it's, oh, Jesus, right there close.
Just your well.
I know, why?
Isn't there a lot of wa- salt in the water there anyways?
Yeah, I got road salt.
Natural.
Okay, uh, we have a write-to-know request for the police department. Um, the board should have read that, checked it out at least.
The nice thing is that he's responded to this request through the policy that we've recently implemented. And we've yet to hear back from the individual, they're from.
They're looking for all kinds of purchase orders and everything else, so that's great.
Where are they from, out of state, somewhere, Colorado or?
There's a second page, cause they're requesting where they are, so that's awesome.
Internally, in my office, which is where a lot of that will come from, we are prepared for it. Uh, but we are not going to create or copy or do anything until the request is made that they give us advance notice to be at our counter. And that's the way we'll uh, offer them that. Providing that right-to-know, we've complied with the days and.
The new policy works well.
You got it, I love it.
Uh, we also have, item number C is a request to start advertising the Genesee alerts uh to the public. I know that I've seen an email going around and um, I think we had, given consensus at one of our fire meetings.
Yes.
I responded, Justin responded, saying that we said yes at that previous meeting, but yes, he does have consensus, and we did that at the previous meeting, if you guys wanted to sign that you can let him know, but I think he thanked us for it already today.
Is uh, and this, it's limited access, who has ability, I think there's two police officers and the leadership and the fire chief and the deputy fire chief.
Um, there's a notice here on item number D for EverSource, notice of recommended vegetation. It looks like EverSource's happy to share our newest nature.
Removal or planting?
Planting, they give you a big.
Thirty native utility, trees, shrubs and perennials, native plants, more important ecosystem. So landscaping with native plants. That they're recommending would be good in, in the answer. Okay, um, I had a call from Hope, R C F in the town here. We had a person down in Gorm Pond. They had their boat out on the mooring. They were concerned about being able to get out of the boat ramps, she asked me to call the state. After a little bit of calling around, I did get ahold of the proper people that coordinate the fishing game ramps. And we have a notice here that Leon has posted on the marquee, as well as on our website.
Yeah.
That the um Gorm Pond Road shoreline and parking area will be closed beginning late Sunday, September twenty second through Friday, October fourth. Um there will be no opportunity to park, launch or tree boats during this time period. Normal fishing will be available from Jason Shoreline. Just prior to the closure portion of parking area, may be used to store materials preparation for making repairs. This may reduce parking, so that being said, I called the homeowner back up, notified them. And they'll be able to get their boat out after it's fixed, it's all washed out from the storms.
Yeah, they weren't able to repair it because what they found was that that dated um hope easement was never put on our town tax maps. So, earlier in the year, between Joe Marie, myself, and working with this fishing game individual, we were we got our assessor involved to assign a lot root number and put it on our tax map, so that was how we were able, they were able to get it into the budget to repair, so now we're at that level, they have the funding and they can make the necessary repairs.
You didn't sign those? Yeah. Oh, no, I didn't sign either, so I guess I gotta. Um, that being said, I'll have to bring it back to public comment.
I got one item.
Okay.
Our new truck is built. Highway department. And it should be delivered next week.
Oh, okay.
Have we got our ad for the employee out yet?
Yes, Leon posted it, I posted it. But the truck will, it's all made, it's gonna get shipped here, and then it'll go to the body place, and Hopkins didn't have that new body installed.
Just so we're aware of it, and we can make it a public record, what was the rate of pay for the driver?
It's depending on the.
On his years.
Years of experience.
Starting pay.
And how, how it fits in our.
I didn't put it in there.
We didn't post it in there.
Because at his request, and I think it was a good, smart move.
Yeah.
Well, just. Either you put a range or nothing.
No.
Okay. Um okay, that's done. Um the way you put the last covenant on the month, will it not be paid before winter?
Yes.
Okay.
You got several others that won't pay at the same time, and mentioned the walkway at the joint loss meeting.
Yeah.
You can also, you're not paying, unless you're gonna start construction on a new town office out there.
No, not for.
Out in the common, any of the new town office.
Fifty more years.
Would be a good spot for one. Infrastructure's all here, water, electricity.
No tree cutting.
Electricity, water, act, road access.
Are they um?
Be a pretty good deal.
What do you call it, are you guys here, your company shimming up the edge of that road, the new road?
We're gonna put the gravel on it, we're letting the asphalt set up a little bit more.
But the company will do it with you like they normally do?
Not that section, typically when we do the binder, we let it solid and then we finish. Cause we'll get all the piece of equipment, and we have to pull it in some places, push it back out.
Oh, and the finish coat will go on it next year?
Yes.
Okay.
Dave, I have a question for Jeff.
Okay, go ahead.
Is there something we can do for my driveway, cause I came home, I had to shovel it out again. And I know what the problem is, it's the um, the mail person comes bombing down the hill, slams the brakes and skids to the stop at my mailbox and digs a trench there every time, you know? Forever burying it. But what happens is all that water comes down the hill, and all the, all the, all the sand gets brought to that point.
Yeah.
So, it's not hard, you know, it's, when you had that berm there, it, that worked good for a while, but now there's so much sand there that you just, every day, there's about a foot deep rut right there. Is there something we can do with that?
Tell the mail person not to do that.
I've tried that, but you know, they're in a hurry all the time.
Yeah, we'll do something. I don't know what.
Yeah, cause like I said, when I got back, I had to shovel quite a bit of it out, you know? And it's like, I know it's gonna start raining soon anyways.
Oh, it's not gonna.
Oh, okay.
We got those hard rainstorms. We're not allowing it.
It actually is missing us.
We're not allowing any more of them.
Well, I could use a week without.
Well, what do you know?
Got it?
Unless you guys wanna pay it.
Okay.
I was gonna say, babe, I knew that, I was gonna go, wow.
Do you have anything for us?
Good news and bad news, I um
Just good news.
Every year, um, I have to file the town's M S one, uh, which is the property values for any improvements um that occur throughout the town for residential and utilities. Um, bad news is that the uh original M F P A eight that EverSource filed with the town in August was um
Is it here?
No. Had mistakes on their form. So, they filed, they submitted another one yesterday, just after three o'clock, which um, after discussing it with the San Souci's office, um resulted in a two point five million dollar increase in their property assessment. And that converts to um about sixty thousand dollars in more tax revenues that will be added, so my original um revenues for the year was in the seventeen thousand dollar range, now we're at nineteen nine forty. So, that will ultimately reduce the taxes probably another thirty cents. That's the good news.
That's right.
The, the bad news is a lot more work for me, but we'll get through it.
Keeping stuff already.
Thank you, Leon.
What did you say?
She, she found money.
Yeah, good money.
Did you guys ever find where this one was supposed to be signed? No?
I'll look through it.
Find any sign, I don't, I don't pick it up.
Back to Boyd.
What's on all this highlighted for, name, some signatures on it?
Oh, no, that's just, what is that? Is that the per, uh, if you need it, is the policy, is that what that is?
Oh, no, that's for.
No, no. No, no.
All right, um, do I need to sign this as the authorized signature or is that Chris? On this one, that we all just initial?
No, no, there's one page with three selectmen on there, I sign the middle and then you sign the top and.
Yeah, and that's on the first page or thing?
First couple pages in.
First page, correct.
And the rest of them initials.
Yeah. And I think you signed it back.
Authorized signature.
Yeah.
Sign the green, check the green.
Do you see where I signed?
Stop pulling the tab off.
I got big fingers, man.
And who's the authorized signatures in the back?
You are, yeah, I think it's, it's you.
Put your mark.
Yes, yeah, this time they have three signatures on front and one on the back.
Just like you sign in your check.
Those get correct.
I didn't see anybody sign manifest, did you guys all sign?
I did, yes, I did this afternoon, I mean, this morning, this, when I came in.
Dave signed when he came in?
Yes, he did.
Okay.
Dave, did you sign?
Yeah, he did. That's how quick we are.
Remember I asked you questions about the budget? And that's one another spot here for me to sign.
You didn't even see Dave goodbye.
We're using.
Flash.
Authorized signature.
Yes.
He was the same name.
If it's not, we'll reprint these pages.
Yeah, I think I did some. So we don't have our one with meals number yet, so.
I'd like it if Massachusetts come up here and spend money, but.
Keep finding money will be okay.
I'm glad the fire department got some money for that truck, clears out Jeff's parking lot too.
Wasn't a problem. Just promotes questions, what are you doing to buy a truck?
I wish I would've known, I would've brought my grandkids here, sitting there.
Yeah.
Okay, this is all part of that.
The bottom one is yours, Dave, the book, that's the audit.
Oh, okay. Lee, uh, we're gonna put this off.
Okay, that's the whole thing to do.
Yeah, he, he, he should be here if he's gonna come, he should be coming in at the time.
I'll bring back, anybody on the select board have anything?
I do, I had the joint loss management committee this week, and a couple items I need to bring the board of. They're asking for, if you think the employees need any specific training, uh, whether it be like, uh, active shooter training or anything like that for twenty twenty-five. And, uh, ACPR or anything like that, if you have any suggestions, uh, just think about it and pass it on to Lee and she'll bring it to the next meeting. The other thing is, Lee is an action item there, you weren't there, but the thing is, um, the, we had the installation of the capital well, put those water filters in, there were ROs. And they need to have, when do we change the, uh, the filters on?
He said that it's not critical, usually goes at least a minimum of two years, but we will definitely be able to tell when they need to be swapped out when the water pressure is reduced. So I can confirm that with capital well, but that's, that's the information, because of the low use that we have here. That, that will go for.
Might actually go longer than that.
Yes, yeah.
And, and the last thing was, um, there was, uh, the, the entire committee was in favor of looking into putting external cameras on every building, town building. For security reasons, uh, and safety.
What board was this from?
The joint loss, uh, management committee.
What's that have to do with cameras?
Uh, safety for, uh, say we had an active shooter, theft of property, uh, variety of things. The thing is, uh, so, the thing is that, that we wanna pursue some, the committee wanted us to pursue some quotes. And I was gonna give the legal quotes before we make a decision on that, but like an external camera, like this building might need two to see who's coming, who's leaving. The information can be stored through the cloud and if something ever happened, we, something was missing, something, or an active shooter came in. Or someone stole something from one of Jeff's, a piece of equipment from his parking lot, we have one to hand. And so that was, uh, a lot of people thought that was worthwhile because there was, the police department, police department has them now and they're like, if the cameras are almost, is it, was it twenty years old or eighteen?
Two thousand and two, he said.
Two thousand and two, and the cameras need to be upgraded, so we can see the license plate numbers now.
I wouldn't know if we need to do all business, I'm not aware of any thefts since I've been on this like one.
Well, the thing is, in this day and age, I'd rather be proactive, I think that where we have people working, I think this building is a bore.
Is there cameras on the school?
Uh, yes, there is, there, the school is loaded with cameras everywhere.
Yeah, remember there was some, two in the gym?
That's a building I would really worry about.
But I think the police department.
The police and fire departments were kind of, uh, concerned because people come and go for different reasons, they have a police station.
But they are, yeah, theirs.
Yeah, I, but I think they're getting obsolete or something.
They're, they're like twenty years old, close to twenty years old.
I, I don't know all the technology of it, it's like I told them at the highway department, we really don't seem to have any issues on it, knock on wood, um, but.
But the thing is, if we're gonna look at it, look, look at some prices, we're not making a decision to buy, but we're just gonna get some prices. And there's a local gentleman who does it locally in town, we got, we get the pro technologies for the second one and then the third one, we can just find, they're gonna find the third contractor. Just to get some ideas of how much, if we, if we wanted to do it, how much it would cost.
Do you wanna focus your contention on the police and fire and on this building for now? Instead of running a person around circles around the whole town for five different buildings?
I have no problem, but the thing is, I'm, I'm only presenting the, uh, the concerns.
I'm, I'm okay with getting prices and looking into it, but I wouldn't say run the person around the whole town and run through every building, cause like Jeff said, I mean.
I don't know, I just wanna make sure that the joint loss isn't like, okay, everything's cleaned up, so now we're gonna go on to something else, you know?
Oh, no, I thought that, that fell well, well within the, uh, the scope of their, uh, the charter, of what they're charged to do.
Chris, did he bring that up because of the more recent, um.
Who brought it up?
Chris brought it up because his is, his is getting, along in the tooth, it's aged.
But his would just be replaced under something getting older, you know?
Under maintenance grade, yeah, right, but the thing is, when, when, when discussion was brought up, I said, geez, maybe these offices need them too. Since they, uh, you have people coming in, coming out, we have, we've had thefts here sometimes, uh.
What have we had?
Oh, stuff, the stuff has been missed out of Lee's office before.
Yeah, and a lot of our, we went with these bars on the outside because, uh.
But we don't need them outside, then we need them right in here.
Well.
This is what I, if you're gonna start cleaning the stuff in here, then we're gonna have cameras in these all these ones.
Correct, but the other problem, I don't like to discuss it on camera, but we're in a fishbowl here. Right now, you don't know if there's one, two, three, five people out there sitting, looking in and watching us and we can't see what's out there. There are several departments that handle transactions that will be leaving in the dark and all different times of the, uh, evening hours and.
So what does the camera do for you and that stuff?
I, for the safety of there, I think that's the whole point that Chris was trying to make is if, if something were to happen, you could catch someone in the action on the camera.
Are the police, do they have them inside and outside?
They have outside and one in the lobby.
In the lobby.
So we would have them in here too?
No, he's recommending start with the outside of the buildings first, I think that's what it said.
Yeah, and so, it's on the table, I'd say we, we can start with the quotes and see how, how pricey it is. And then, I, I like the idea of scoping it down to like the three buildings, um, or the two buildings, the fire, fire.
Yeah, there's nothing wrong with, we're not gonna do this building.
Yeah, I, you know, hurt my feelings too.
So I, I.
You gotta have, if there's still any equipment, I mean, it's gonna be, yeah, it's.
Insurance is.
Bucket and sand is gonna be cheaper than the camera.
They have an open door policy, yeah.
So, uh, I like to give, uh, consensus so we can lean, pursue the quotes for the.
Town office and the fire.
The nice part about the system now is the police could log into this system and they could monitor these cameras for anybody in the.
He was taking all the paper clips.
I guess at the fire department, they had some dead animal carcasses dropped off there some, like early.
Early on, yes.
Yeah.
And they, the way the cameras were set up, they didn't get any picture of how they got there or anything. I think appeared, um, I don't know, I'm not involved in it, but it appeared like it was an isolated incident, but why, I don't know.
I didn't know they'd take them, I'll bring some.
Maybe it was roadkill stew or something, wasn't it?
That, that, that's the, uh, incident, maybe anything else.
All right, that being said, let's, uh, adjourn at eight forty.
I'll second.
Dave, second all in favor? All right, let's go.